We're going to call the order of the regularly scheduled school board meeting. Next order of business, it's a pool of the June 8th minutes.
Make an ocean fifth group of minutes.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? All right, and all is in favor, so if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All of those sessions and that motion carries. And next item of business is the Limited Ambulance Service. We have some here to discuss the little notes.
Chief Tomber is here to speak with the board. And.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Dave Talber. I'm not going to touch anything. I'm the chief operating officer of Winwood Medical Center, which is the parent corporation to Winwood Ambulance. I'm not sure whether people are aware of that. Nonprofit corporation formed in 1972. Primary purpose of the corporation was to provide medical facilities in the town of Lincoln. At that point, Lincoln had none with the closing of the wood mill and so on. So the nonprofit corporation was made sure Manhattan was on the original incorporating board. And the purpose was to build a facility and maintain a facility to attract the physician and medical practice into town and other medical facilities as were needed. At one point, they operated a small pharmacy and so on and so forth. That was in 1972. So the piece of property at 115 Main Street, which is end of the driveway here between us and the restaurant, was deeded by the town of Lincoln to the nonprofit corporation. And there's a codicil on the deed that says if at any time we stop using it for medical purposes, that that piece of property reverts to the school board. And that's why I'm here. So the building and the property, I mean, 1972 now is 50 years old. Building itself is coming to the end of its useful life. The physician practice that is in there is running its course and has tried several times to recruit a new physician in town. But in the meantime, in the last three years, of course, we've had the opening of a walk-in clinic, mid-state medical center. And Littleton has plans to build another medical facility here in town next to the walk-in clinic. So we've gone from no medical facilities in town, other than that was run by our nonprofit corporation, to maintain a physician here in town to an abundance of medical facilities. That, of course, will make it even more difficult or impossible for the current medical practice that is residing in our building to recruit a successor as the current physician retires. So the Board of Trustees has asked me to come to you and remind you, if you didn't already know, that that whole property will revert to you if at some point we stop holding a medical practice in there, we stop hosting a medical practice in there. Because the medical practice, of course, is an independent entity. And we provide the facilities, which is how the corporation was set up to start with. So we wanted to kind of notify you of that, make sure you were aware of it, and possibly start some lines of communication as to a realization of what may happen in the next couple of years with that property. And that you may wind up having to either say you're going to use it, take it, do something with it, or dispose of it. And given that it's been 50 years, and I don't see any of Governor Adams' successors on the board, I thought maybe we should remind you of that piece of this.
I have a copy of the registered deed. We recently had lawyers look at it. It is still very definitely in effect, just essentially the way I presented it to you.
Yeah. Medical Center, sorry, the organization, Winwood Medical Center organization. It's not, they don't, you know, have any plans for, you know, those students, sort of English stock or the ambulance. Obviously, they're not, there's no plan to do anything with it from your perspective?
Not really. Since, you know, we've gone to, we've gone away from Cadillac Station, Wigan Ambulances. The garage is originally built into the medical center for the purpose of running the ambulance for the two towns, which was part of our original provide medical services to the town. Those garages no longer, will no longer fit our current apparatus, which is one of the reasons why the new building was built now 17 years ago. We've been in our current building now 17 years. And pretty much the building here at 115 Main Street, as I say, is pretty much the end of its useful life 50 years on. And we certainly couldn't fit any of the things into it at this point.
And what about the timeline for the practice closing? That sort of up there?
We, yeah, we've had several discussions with the current medical practice that's in there over the last four years, going on five years now that I've been the chief. And we have not been able to pin down a specific plan. Like my own grandfather, who was surgeon, and my father, who was a physician, I think their plan is to die in office.
So we don't, we don't have, quite have a sense of plan to expect.
This to happen, no. Could be tomorrow, it could be by year's end. But at this point, we believe that the ability to attract the new tenants for the same purpose is becoming slimmer and slimmer with the increase of mid-state here, Littleton having a presence here, Littleton expanding their presence here. And quite frankly, it then tends to be the original purpose for which it was built is no longer necessary. It was originally built in the public interest as a nonprofit to have some medical presence in the town, which, you know, Littleton and Plymouth have moved closer through the years by way of the highway. You know, back then, it was considerably more arduous to get patient care. And I'm not sure any of that's true anymore.
Is there still dental practice in there?
There is dental practice in the building three days a week. We also rent a room to the visiting nurse association as an office. I'm not quite sure what they use it for. And we rent the room as an office or a base of operations to the area mental health association, which again, neither of those two see patients there in the building, but mostly store equipment there, as best I can tell. I've actually, they're so sparse in the building that I've actually never met them.
So if services go away from that building, how does that impact you?
Well, both the mental health service and the VNA are connected to Littleton, and I expect that they would get offices in the new building that Littleton has been proposing. I really am not sure. Another whole jigsaw piece to all of this is the advent of what we call mobile integrated healthcare. So VNA-type services are more and more being supported by emergency medical services in cooperation with the VNA agencies who find themselves overwhelmed and understaffed. We are a certified MIH provider, and we're working with Littleton to expand some of those mobile integrated healthcare services down into this valley. And the VNA service is part of Littleton's operation. So they're kind of, you know.
So how does it affect you if that goes away?
Not primarily at this point. It's a very small piece of anything that we're conceiving of.
And are you actively recruiting for, for that role, physician role, or is it?
It's not our place because a physician practice is its own independent business, and it would have to either be sold or somehow attract a physician that wanted to entrepreneurially start their own practice here in town. And with Littleton proposing a circuit rider system of their own physicians coming into this building that they're proposing, I don't see an outside physician. I don't think it's realistic.
So from your perspective, you see this sort of, you see that the usefulness of that building for the purpose that it was intended is pretty much.
At the end of its life.
Okay.
That's really when it comes down. There's the bottom line right there. And if we walk away from it, then it becomes yours.
Yeah.
We are restricted by the covenant to do anything else with it, unless the school board decides otherwise.
And it's your, say, expectation that that is what's going to happen?
I would expect, we can't legally sell it. We can't, I can't foresee doing something else with it. I can't foresee renovating it in some way that calls it a medical purpose. I mean, yes, we could maintain the dental practice alone and the two minor tenants alone wouldn't pay for just building office. And as a nonprofit, of course, we can't go in the hole for that purpose. It would need an anchor tenant, if you will, the medical practice, which is in there five days a week, until it's not.
As it is now, does the building support itself financially?
The building does support itself financially at the moment. But it's also a 50-year-old building, and it does need some work that is beyond what the current rents would support.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe we should start thinking about putting together some committee to figure out the next steps on that. What good question. Is the dentist still in?
Yes, three days a week.
Well, what happens with him?
That would be a good question. If the medical practice goes out of there and the buildings doesn't get a new anchor tenant and other medical practice, I don't foresee the current tenant, meaning the dentist and the two, the mental health association and the VNA association supporting that building. And the dentist has been in other locations here in town prior. He came to us having left the mill building. He was in the mill building for a number of years and then decided to come across the street to us. Whether he would relocate to someplace else in town a couple days a week, he has a shared practice. He practices elsewhere the rest of the week.
And dental and mental health, that would still qualify as a medical purpose?
Probably. Again, unless somebody challenged it legally, I would assume so.
But you're saying that if those are the only tenants, that's not a financially viable option?
Not financially viable with just two, one and a half and two tenants. One and two half tenants. I guess that adds up to two tenants.
Well, I think maybe we should put this on the agenda at some point. Maybe not this summer, maybe in the fall. Some start of the conversation about what we want to do and what's possible.
Obviously, you're going to have to consult with your own attorneys as to what your options are. As long as the codicil is in the deed, then the potato comes to you.
Yeah.
Unless you guys revoke the codicil by some, by some board vote.
Yeah, you said it's at the end, the useful life for the medical practice.
It's a 50-year-old building.
Do you know if there's been any major renovations done?
I know what's been done in the last five years that I've been the chief operating officer here. I also know what's needed in general in the building. I think that's something you guys have to have. We've had an architect in to look at it. At one point, we considered actually rebuilding an entirely new building. And our funding source that was going to help us with that diverted in a different way. I think that with, probably it would have to be a federal funding source, but which is how the original building was built. The original building was built by what's known as Hill Burton Funds. Hill Burton Act is, no longer exists, but essentially the building was built with federal funding to start with when Governor Adams was on the board.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time, and if you want to discuss this further, well, let's now.
Appreciate it.
Right next up is correspondence. And I don't believe that guy can be better. Yeah, okay, so. That business is a good one.
Yeah, so the bond sale took place on July 12th, and that's people worked there, they wanted to sign, and just the final signing of all of the execution delivery of the bond, and they later tear up and go along with the bond. The rate came in at 3.26%. It was a pretty good rate, it was well below any of the rates we got from the banks, and it's below what they had capped at 3.5%. So. We need to set up a technology trust fund hearing and a facilities trust fund hearing. Hopefully, I guess at our next meeting in August. The technology trust fund is for the elementary school Wi-Fi project that Trey had presented during the budget, and we said, well, we'll use the technology trust fund for that. So we need to have a hearing for that. And the facilities trust fund is for the middle and high school H-THAT project, because part of that was funded from the facilities, along with the barn, along with the S-GRAN. We had a whole lining, different ones for that. So we're there to have those here in the office.
Is, and that soon enough, you think?
I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That it?
And that's it.
Thank you. Dr. McGinn.
I mean, you have your final, a copy of your board goals in your packet to read. And there were no committee reports at this time. We are working on our professional development committee meeting first thing in the fall. And then some projects are definitely moving forward. You also received a copy of the registered board card for July. The summer school has begun. The students that are receiving the extended school year program are, they're involved in the NETH program. They're also involved in the NETH program. The NETH program is for the disabled, and so it's just amazing. They go on trips on a daily basis and a lot of experience. I just wanted to give you an update on the SRO. It's Officer Benson Scraper. And also, for your information, the police department is also training with another officer. Officer Meyer will be going as well to the formal SRO training so that just in case there is the need for, you know, some people just slip in, they'll be able to do that as well. Let's see. Rest is board action. I do have a candidate.
Great.
Nomination. So our principal's report is in your, in your packet this year.
Sorry, is there anything else that has that?
Yeah, his report gets into the details of all the different projects that are going on.
Yeah, it sounds like there's just a lot going on generally. Great.
And then the report card does include all that, so you'll just feel that as well for the catches that we got today. Okay, I'll start.
Thank you. Any committee votes?
None.
No. And then we have the staff nominations, hard to initiate.
Yes, nomination. I have Cameron Burr, C.A.M.R.Y.N.E.U.R.R. For high school social studies teacher. She is just coming fresh out of college, so she's a lot to step for. And Sean Hagan, Peter Stavali, and Jason Robert, who are lead interviewers that interviewed her. And they're great guys.
So we need a vote on that?
Yes.
So I'll send the motion to accept the nomination of Cameron Burr for high school social studies teacher.
Senator.
Take this. Thank you. Like Kevin, any further discussion on that? Do you have a copy of the?
Potato?
No, the, usually we get like a, like the. Yeah, where the name, sorry.
The information offering?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I didn't bring it with me, but I will give that to you. I will.
Thank you. Any, do they have, outside of questions? You said it was, if you rather, it's a lolly and.
John Hagan.
All right, all of the favors, if you have a saying aye. Close sessions, and that motion carries. We'd welcome Cameron Burr. Any other?
That's it, good on us.
2021, 22 audit?
Yes, we started our final audit, 21, 22 audit, which is actual hard copies. Just, just so you know, the audit process, they usually come in and do the physical audit. The auditors, I think they came in last October, and they go through and look at all the data. Journal entries, student act can be funds, group service fund, the general fund, just looking at data integrity in general. So they come in and they're usually, they're field audit. They usually do it for two or three days, with two or three auditors bawding around the offices. And then they leave and they start pulling together schedules and reports, and they might have some things lingering that I'll have to send to them, and they do an overview of all the financials and the different, different funds. And this, this other, what they call GASB, Government Accounting Standards Boards, reporting requirements like pension liability and fixed assets, things that schools don't normally have. Because we don't, we do fund accounting, we don't do a real balance sheet, which would have fixed assets and long-term liabilities and pension liabilities and things like that. So they, they take what we do and then create more statements out of that. And there's communications back and forth from the time they do the field audit. In fact, I'm starting right now, but they're not even coming into October till when we get the final report. They, this year took a little longer. They have been having health issues as well as every other company in America, you know. So, but again, we were in full communications during the time. Once they do the final schedules and statements, they send me some of those, and I have to write a report called the management discussion and analysis, which is in that, in the audit too, which kind of puts into words a lot of the statements, you know, what went on during the year, looking at our budget versus actual. And there's certain requirements of that. And then, once I send them that report, everything's pulled together in the final report. But it is a process that it took a little longer this year. But again, I was in communication to them because I'm like, okay, am I missing something? I don't know, you know, what do we need? And so that's the 21, 22 audit. They have since given us, given us the, again, starting on 22, 23 audit. And there's an audit engagement letter, which has to be signed within a, engage them in our audit again for the next year. And then they've scheduled them in in October, but they start receiving stuff now.
So we need to vote on this.
Engagement with the auditors.
And this is not, you said this is not the full report?
The full report is right there. So they gave you a letter, a management letter, basically saying, okay, these are any of the major findings, which they weren't any major findings. See, there's some repeat findings, but that's, sometimes it's just kind of how we do business, and they talk about it. And then, you know, what I look at too is how many adjusting entries do they have to make? Because that means that there's something going on, or things aren't accurately reported. They don't have to make too many adjustment entries. Usually their balance sheet figures. So. But yeah, if you have any questions on any of the findings, we had changes, especially with student activities, changes in personnel. So it's a matter of like this year, I went through a lot of training, the new administrative assistant at the high school, because again, that's a very highly audited area, because the student activities counts. But she's had a great job.
How was the firm choosing, is it the same firm that you were for?
Many, many years. There's not that many firms, and they're not taking on new clients. And it's hard. I mean, yeah, you know, the thing is, there's different auditors that come in every year because they have new auditors that come in. So it is a different set of eyes looking at things. It's not the same auditors. But I mean, they all, each audit firm has really a list of things that they have to look at for a product. But yes, I talked with other schools to see, and again, how many audit firms have closed, or they're not taking any questions, they're just saying.
So from your perspective, was there anything concerned?
No, again, it's just the timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, and again, new auditors coming in from their perspective is, is good. I kind of have to, you know, not be teach them because they're teaching you too, but you know, kind of go through everything, how to, how you do things here. They look a lot at that, look a lot at our process and procedure.
Yeah.
What are our policies? Are we following our policies? What are, what's our process and procedure? Have we followed those?
So I guess we just need to take a vote on the engagement contract for having them for next year. So. I would, so the motion to recruit Bosick and Sanderson P.A., certified public accountants, to retain them for 2023.
Senator.
Any further discussion on that? All those favors, if you have a saying aye.
Aye.
Close sessions, and that motion carries. Anything under new businesses there?
No, nothing under new business.
And continuing business, asset funds and strategic plan?
Strategic plan, yeah, we're working. What we're doing now is on, we just had our retreat, Advent Retreat. So, so just the Advent got together and had two days worth of communication and a meeting. And we based it on the strategic plan, where we put this strategic plan card, looked at all the different, you know, areas and component areas that we needed to work on. And discussed how we were going to be forward with that and continue with what we're working on now, and then just grow from that materials. It was very good. But we're on, in focus, and everyone seems to be on the same page.
And. One student's here, we would ask that.
Yeah. I didn't give anything back when I asked anybody, had anything you wanted me to ask one, two, but I can share that Heather Krill and I have been doing girls of summer for Venn P Heights, kind of a small group this year. And yesterday, we just had our BOSSGOS 2023 with Erin Latch and Jero Hector. And the boys of summer, so we had a hedge hug. We changed the plan a little bit because of possible weather, but we were just about in front of Luna, and the skies opened up, so we turned that right. But yeah, it was a great night, and we've been, had doing, doing well with the girls. The boys of summer overnight is next week. We're going to do a night at Lafayette. And then the girls of summer, we'll do the week after. We're going to do a night up at Loonson Lake Hut. First time in the agency hut this year due to a donation made by the Mountain Ministry Pizza for the People. So I'm going to be staying in one of those. Everybody always thinks we do, and we're like, yeah, yeah, a little bit too much. And then we're going to do a night down at Lafayette Campground, also different than previous years. But we talk about roasting marshmallows and making s'mores and cooking over a fire, and we can't do that in that country. So this will be a nice night when we do that, so.
Is that like two nights in a row?
Yeah.
So one night up at the hut and then one night down.
Yeah. Yeah, so next week is one night at Lafayette for the boys of summer, and the week after will be Monday night, each of us doing girls of summer.
Nice.
Yeah.
It's been a rough summer for that.
We come out there, singing it out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And can you be?
I'm interested to listen about the ambulance thing, the medical thing. I was interested in, I didn't really just start it first, I had a little player.
All right, well, that's the end of our agenda, so let's move to Jared.
Oh, like a motion.
Thank you, Kevin. All of the favors. And that is famous.